Go ahead.
So I determined that we have a quorum. And the Board of Ed will move to executive session to discuss other matters. The disclosure of which would result in an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Everybody could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the fact, United States of America.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Please all join me for a moment in silence as we send out our thoughts and our prayers in our hearts to Joe Brera and his family. Thank you very much. Okay, we do have three things tonight for the superintendent's report, so we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Masero.
Okay, and yeah, George, thank you for that moment of silence. Clearly, our community has suffered a devastating loss. You know, you know, we many of us are or all of us in the community are really saddened, you know, by the events that took place a couple of weeks ago. There's been a tremendous outpouring in our community for the Rera family. And, you know, clearly, many of the kids have been impacted. It's I'll be honest, it's been, you know, quite unusual, though, because the typical grieving that we would normally see in a school is necessarily taking place like it has in the past. You know, much of the grieving is taking place virtually where kids are, you know, are staying home. And, you know, and they're with their friends or with their family as opposed to, you know, gathering within the school. You know, how we've conceived in the past. So, you know, that's kids have to really find comfort and solace any way they can. And we certainly try to do everything we could to be there for the Rera family and for all the kids. So, and we will continue to do what we can to support that. But certainly, a tremendous loss to our entire community. So, thank you for that, George, and starting in that way.
Thank you.
I want to, you know, I'll start the report with a with a brief presentation. I have to say that one of the one of the things that, you know, I think that we've got a website that's just fine, that does a lot of really good things. But also, sometimes, you know, from my standpoint, I know what other websites have done. I've seen functionality that has been, you know, exceptional in terms of getting messaging out and being able to interact and do a lot of different things that we just don't have the capability of with our website. Another drawback of our website is that we host it locally. And that opens us up to some vulnerabilities for things like cyber attacks and such. And so, you know, in speak with the board, last year, we did make a determination that it would be advisable to make a switch. We contracted with Syntax, who does just that, does some website redesign and and is able to, you know, host it on their own and update our website. So with us today is the Chief Operating Chief Executive Director of Syntax, Corinne Morton. So I would introduce Corinne and Bill, I think I'm going to actually need to be made a co-host because Corinne sent in my email. She sent me a mock-up of the website that we're going to share with the board and the community.
You got it, your co-host.
Okay, so I'm going to open up the link. And then I'm going to go back to Zoom and I'm going to. Are you there, Corinne?
Yes.
Okay, just give me a second while I open that up. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Corinne Morton and I will be your Vanna White. Corinne, you can tell me what you want me to do with the actual with the actual website.
You can just go to the top for now.
Yeah, let me, I guess I should open it. How do I, which I open it with, just?
You got it. Right there is perfect.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, just leaving it. Yeah, it's just graphic. It's good.
All right.
There you go.
All right, so.
Can you bigify it a little more, Ron? Is that possible?
You didn't say bigify, did you?
I did. You just hit the, I don't know, maybe it's just me. I don't know. All right.
I'd bigify it a little bit more, George.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, there we go. That's good. Now I can see the small writing.
Okay. So all you, Corinne, sorry about that. I'm doing my best to help you out here.
Okay, so about a month or so ago, right at the start of school, we had met with the district administration to kind of go over what the look of the website, you know, what are the important features that we would want? What is the overall look and feel? What are some of the things that parents typically want to find on on your website? Obviously, having done this for many years with predominantly school districts, we have a pretty good awareness of the type of thing that or things that, you know, your community is looking for when they visit your website. So after the conversation with the administrators, we had, you know, come back and done a design, this mock-up here that you see, based on based on that conversation. So the new website will definitely be responsive, so it will respond to all of, you know, your devices that you're on. It will take whatever form, if you're on an iPad, if you're on an iPhone, which we see is pretty much the main things that people are using outside of district computers that are issued. So you want to make sure that when people are viewing it on those devices, that it actually, you know, conforms to their screen size. So up at the top, you have some of your quick links, like your phone number, your address, which are things that people would typically look for, links to your social media and YouTube, which I know are accessed quite a bit. Your center, where it's a center, which is school district, that's going to take you home, no matter what page you're on. The navigation stays the same throughout the entire website, so it doesn't change based on whether whether or not you're on a school page or a different page. We had also talked about the big picture you see here, which is, you know, going to connect to some type of small news stories, just to kind of change that out. That can be done relatively quickly and easily. You know, pictures will be sent to Syntax for uploading on the website. I'll basically run through the mock-up first, and then I'll explain what some of the next steps are and what Syntax provides as far as maintenance and things like that. So we can run through as many stories as we want, if we want to start with five and then up that to any certain number. Five is usually the typical amount. It will scroll through those stories on its own. However, you can use the left and right arrows that you see next to the words in the story. So if you scroll down a little bit more, this section here has some announcements, and that is typically for any letter, anything that you really need the community to see quickly. I did forget that at the top, if we have, we have two forms of notifying your community based on whether or not, you know, there's an emergency issue, whether you have to close schools or, you know, those snow days that maybe are no longer. But there's one that would be a banner that would just scroll across your screen. And the other one is actually a pop-up, so when you visit the website, it would actually have a pop-up screen that shows up, and somebody would have to clear that out in order to see the actual website. So it's really in your face as far as notifying the community. So then if you scroll down a little bit, as I was saying, you have the announcement section, and those are, again, typically your letters, things like that. When you click on one of those links to the left, that would take you to a pop-up that opens up that would either have additional information, other links, PDFs, anything that needs to be downloaded. Things like that can all be housed in there. We have a link to, or actually not linked to, but the Twitter feed, which would be embedded right on the page. At this point, I think Google Apps are pretty much a necessary thing for people to have easy access to. So there's a nice little section there for people to get to all of the important Google Apps. And then I know you guys have a pretty good following on social media. So you have a little social media corner with some of your hashtags, which can be clickable to bring up any of those things that are inside of the CM positivity and the CM pride. And if there's any more that come up, you know, we can look at adding those. Underneath that, we have the upcoming events, which would really pull directly from the calendar that's input by by our staff. And obviously, this isn't a typical year, but on a in a typical year, this calendar is usually fairly full. And this would automatically bring items to the front, and then they would fade away as time, you know, as the day goes on. So just like the news stories too, everything has a start date and an end date. So everything is input and will come down by itself. There's no need to go back into the documents or into the website and take them down. As long as they're given an end date, they will disappear. Same for the upcoming events, they too will just pop on and pop off as that day passes. And then if you scroll down a little bit more, we have a section here, which is for your quick links. There we go. And and those are just, again, easy clickable links that we know people are looking for, your community, your residents, your parents. You know, these are, these are your typical quick links that people people need to get to. These can be changed out at any time, so these are not something that have to be there. If, you know, COVID, we need that to come down, and we can replace that with something else, or let's say it's budget time, and we want to take student registration off. Any of these can be taken down or put back up. We can also add more and just make it scroll so that, you know, if there's none that we want to actually take down, but we want to add up more, we can do that as well. Below that, we have the three school pictures, which would actually bring you to each of those pages. More of a design feature. And then below that, we just have the site footer, which also has some easy to find contact information as well as your social media links again. And typically, everything from the quick links down would remain on every single page, so that information stays consistent and is easily defined on all pages. As far as how this works in getting built, so basically with this design, the next phase would be to program this out into our custom management, custom content management system. And that just makes this plain mock actually function. And you'll, you know, we'd actually have functioning pages, functioning dropdowns and things like that. And from that point forward, once we have an actual program site, we would then begin migrating content. So we have a web team at the office, and they would actually take care of moving items from your current website to the new website and making that and building that out. Once we migrate all of that content, a link is shared with the district for review. Once that review is complete and everything, all changes have been made, we can then set a date to launch. And then, once we launch that, you have a brand-new website that's functioning. And also, what we do is we would help maintain the website. So there's a ticket system that we have. People would just email into the ticket system. Those changes will be made to the website, and email will get generated back to them that it's been completed. And, you know, those things typically happen within a 24-hour period. If there's anything that's an emergency, there are people at the district that would would enter have access to the website to post anything at a moment's notice. It's very easy. It works much like a word editor. You put in a title, a start date, end date, some information, and everything is ready to go. So it does function pretty, pretty, it's pretty easy. I think that that's pretty much the overview of the website. I thank you for allowing me to display this for you, and if you have any questions or.
I don't, I don't have any questions. It looks very nice. I'm just, are we streamlining number of clicks too?
That's the goal.
Navigate it?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll take the content that's on your current site. We've already had conversations about streamlining that content and making sure that most of the content is up to date by the time we would start migrating content over to the new website. So that this way, it's, you know, pretty streamlined already, but we will go through. And again, having worked with a number of school districts and this being a part of what we do, we do have a good awareness of of where things and pages should be so that people can actually find them easily and not have to click and go down a rabbit hole to find those.
Is there going to be an audio option when you scroll over things for, say, somebody who's visually impaired?
Yes.
There will be.
The ADA compliance.
ADA compliance, you know, something we're always working on. I never can say that anything is 100% ADA compliant, but we are well aware of all of the guidelines. We do have a little widget that appears on the website to help assist with that ADA compliance. And most of our sites are work perfectly fine with an e-reader.
Okay. That was the only things that I had. Looks good. Exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Corinne. That that looks great, and we're excited to have to be able to work with you on that.
Welcome. Thank you for having me here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job with the scrolling.
Oh, you know, that's, everybody's got to be good at something, George.
Yeah.
That's my skill. All right, so then then the, you know, a couple of other things, you know, I would just report out on, you know, just just a few things. Number one, obviously, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about, you know, the uptick of COVID cases in Suffolk County and what we're seeing. And I think that I want to, you know, try to be as transparent as possible. We're trying to get all the all the information out to the community. We are sharing, you know, when positive cases come in that impact our school, we do submit letters. You know, it really is a, you know, a challenge trying to keep up with everything, because we do have people that are quarantined, but not necessarily positive cases. However, the positive cases that we do have in our school system, we do have to update in our system. And we have to update in the state, New York State Education Department database. So that reporting is a mandate for us so that New York State Education Department can track the number of cases in various schools, and they do have a site that that tracks that on state level. Today, our first positive case came in October 19th. So roughly, almost exactly a month to the day ago, our first positive case was reported to us. Today, our last positive case was reported to us. And in the in that month, it's been roughly a case every other day, if you if you factor it in, because we have 16 cases that have been reported. Of those 16 cases, 11 have been on in our students, three amongst our staff, and two in our on our buses that have been reported to us. So I would say that, you know, the one thing I I can tell you is that I'm very proud that, you know, when we were making decisions over the summer, we struggled with with the decisions. And I think you saw some of that struggle in Board of Education presentations, where I frankly said that I will admit that our reopening plan is not the 100% most educationally sound plan, because we had to defer when push came to shove. And and the the best educational plan was at odds with the safest plan. We had to defer to health and safety. And so what I can say is that while we have seen districts with, you know, I don't want to compare. However, we have seen districts with much more density have to go down and shut down full buildings for sometimes extended periods of time. We have not had a mass quarantine. And many of many of that, you know, many of those cases are because of the the reopening plan that we put in place. Some of the things like the A A B B model have enabled us, because kids have four days off from school have enabled us to be able to stay open. Because you always have to do a 48-hour look back whenever a positive case comes in. And, you know, timing has been in our favor, but also our model has helped us. So the other things that have helped us was the protocols on our bus with leaving seats empty behind drivers and, you know, bus aides. That has helped us. Other things that have helped us was the the density in our in our classes, because we are able to maintain 6 feet and masks. Because when you do that, you have a, you know, a better likelihood lack of, you know, where you would not spread. I could say that, you know, the governor's message at the start of the school year was wary and apprehensive in terms of schools' ability to keep kids and staff safe. I think to a person in the health field, I think I haven't heard anybody saying anything, but schools are the safest place for kids to be, and that's proven now. Suffolk County Department of Health Services since September has been tracking over 900 cases in over 300 schools. And in those situations, we have not seen an instance where there has been transmission in the actual school itself. We are seeing spread that's taking place in the community. And that's why, you know, all our messaging is that the things we're doing in schools, PPE, universal mask wearing, maintaining six-foot social distance and 12 feet in super-spreading events, as well as hand and respiratory hygiene matters and emphasizing those with our kids, making sure we're washing our hands. Those are the things that matter, and those are the things that we need to be doing in our community. I would say, you know, and in my letter last week, I did make the clear statement that there's been rumors out there. And there were rumors that we were potentially, or not us in particular, but that schools in Suffolk County or on Long Island were looking to close between Thanksgiving and Christmas or Thanksgiving, or, you know, the holiday break or even even into the into January. I can emphatically say that that's not that's not the truth, that there hasn't been no coordinated effort to do this. There are a couple of schools that have made decisions like that. However, those I had a conversation even with the governor's office about this and are fully supportive, really believe that the best thing we can do is keep our schools open. I believe that 100%. I believe that if our faculty and our staff and our kids continue to do what we're doing, and that is those three, three things that we've talked about, we can certainly keep kids safe in school. And I think the benefit is that, number one, we keep kids safer in school than out of school, where they could gather freely without those things. We could provide a better education if we keep kids in school than than if we were fully remote. We can also keep our economy going, because things are happening when people can get to work and be productive. We can provide the necessary daycare for our essential workers to be able to do the things that they need to do when we see an uptick in cases. And so I, for all of those reasons, I think that staying, making sure that we do everything we can to keep our school open is critical and very, very important. So I would just emphasize those things and say that I'm very, very proud of our staff, of our community for the support that we've had. And I think that it's not easy. I'll be honest with you, you know, when when, you know, when we get a case, we do everything we can. Ricardo is our COVID coordinator for the school district, and he's a he's a very busy man, whether it be Veterans Day Wednesday or whether it be a, you know, a Sunday at 1:00 in the afternoon. The call comes in and Ricardo goes to work, and I can't thank him enough for the efforts he puts into making sure. You know, and hey, it's an annoyance, you know, we have to call teachers on a Sunday to find out what their interactions were with with a child on a Friday. And and those are the things that we do, but we're doing so to ensure the health and safety of everyone in our school district. So those those things, you know, they really, they make a difference. And that's what keeping people in our community safe is all about. So, like I said, I'm proud of the job our teachers are doing. I'm proud of the job our administrators are doing. And, you know, more importantly, probably, I'm proud of the job the kids are doing. Because without question, from kindergarten through 12th grade, kids are doing what they're being asked to do when they're in school and staying safe. Now, what we need to do is we need to see all the adults and everybody else in society do that in the in the settings outside. Because the places we are seeing spread are the places where, and this is in, you know, direct communication with the Health Department, it is in the parties. There was a Halloween bump, as we've seen. And we know that that Halloween bump resulted in many tremendous uptick of cases in the county, where we went above 3% for upwards of a week in Suffolk County. And that was a much higher percentage than anybody felt comfortable with. We are seeing those numbers level off. However, there is fear that over the holiday break, over Thanksgiving, that we will see a Thanksgiving bump. As you can see from the governor, when the governor puts out an edict that is basically to the effect that only 10 people should gather for Thanksgiving dinner, that's a strong message. I don't, I think that there's a lot of people that might not be very happy with that message. But I think everyone to a person has to understand that that message is coming from a place where they're taking the health and safety very, very seriously in New York State. So I would please ask everyone, if you have a positive case, whether it be in a family member, please report that, because that would necessitate a quarantine for your children that attend our schools. Or if there's a case in our children, please report that case. We have, you can call the schools. Any of those hours comes in during those times, or on our website, there is an enter hours reporting link that you can go in, report all the necessary information, and and then we take it from there, and we do the rest and make sure we follow up appropriately. Other than that, I just, you know, I can't emphasize enough that that we, you know, we are excited that, you know, we've been able to, from the start of September, provide the education we're providing, we continue to move in a positive direction. We have been examining. You know, you know, we talk about these look-back periods. You know, we've given dates for look-back periods, and one of those was Monday, where, you know, Dennis, myself, Raina, Ricardo sat down, we started to talk about, you know, Clayton Hewie. And we were discussing some of the options for for what we could potentially do. And and we're still having those conversations. Although, you know, given given the spike out there, having having the, you know, the Wednesday, you know, has been a help to us. And we are, you know, we are committed to our online learners. So we're we're working through some scenarios and some possibilities to further increase some contact time for our our learners at Clayton Hewie. But otherwise, I can, I can report that, while not easy, again, I'm just very proud of the work of our staff. A couple of other things to report would be some of our, you know, the NLI Day, National Letter of Intent Day, has come. And it was a little bit different this year. We did, you know, bring in kids one at a time with their families to do some signings, and you may have seen those on social media. But I want to offer some congratulations to some students who are committed to various colleges. I would start with Bella Reed, who will be attending Monmouth University and playing women's lacrosse. Congratulations, Bella. I think that's very, very exciting. Annabelle Taylor is also one of our women's lacrosse players, and she is committed to Seton Hill University. So congratulations, Anna. I know they're very lucky to have you. And then we also have Erin Cunningham, who will be attending Fredonia and playing softball. So congratulations to you, Erin. And we have Lola Kachansky, who will be playing women's soccer at Adelphi. So very proud of these athletes for signing their National Letters of Intent. And I'm, you know, really, really excited. Oh, and we also have Jordan Titus, who also signed his National Letter of Intent. So congratulations to all of our, for wrestling, that is, and congratulations to all of our athletes on an exciting time for them. Trying to think what else I might have. Oh, I walked over. Our committees have been meeting, and I know just to give myself a break from talking, I'm going to go over to Ricardo, maybe to mention some of the things happening with our diversity, equity, inclusivity committee.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Masero. We actually had two committee meetings last week. The first one was Technology Committee, and I don't want to go into DEI, the Diversity, Equity and Inclusivity Committee, before mentioning Technology Committee that met on Tuesday of last week. And when we get together as a technology committee, we're looking at predominantly two things. And when we get together as a technology committee, we're looking at predominantly two things. We're looking at the hardware and software inventory of the district and trying to ascertain whether or not the devices that we currently have in-house, devices that we have loaned out to students, and the software are truly meeting the needs of our teachers, of our students in support of our educational program. So we're looking at it district-wide. One of the things that we looked at is not only looking at the software inventory, but looking at whether or not there's any redundancies in, in the software, meaning are there any applications? Any software that individual teachers utilize or administrators utilize that may have overlap with other software that, that we currently utilize or we currently have a subscription to. So we're looking at that, and the purpose for that is to try to see if we could possibly save any funds by, and I'm sure that Carrie is going to be very happy with this, as we look at our complete inventory. And if we can better utilize the resources in a different area. So we put out a survey to the staff this week. And the survey really just is questioning how teachers are utilizing the software that we have. And what are their current needs and the aspect of professional development? What are their needs in terms of hardware and software to enhance their student educational experience? So those are some of the things we're looking at. So I thank all the members of our technology committee. I really appreciate your time and energy. The next committee that I wanted to speak to is the committee that Dr. Misera just mentioned, which is leading the district this year, is the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. And this past Thursday, we had our second meeting. And I think that it was a fabulous meeting, especially considering the fact that this is the first meeting that we had six students participate in the meeting. So we have six committee members that are new to the committee, and there were six of them because that came about in our first meeting from the committee members was that we really wanted, or they really wanted, and I really wanted, more student voice in the conversation. So I would ask to quite a few students, I have to thank Ms. Dench, who volunteered, who spoke to Dan, I was about to say volunteered, but I attracted that on Danielle, but so we had Danielle's children, we have a couple of other children as well, or high school students. And I know that initially, if you guys are listening to this, I know initially you might have been a little reluctant to participate, and I'm sure in future meetings you will. But I understand that it was the first meeting, and we were talking about a lot of really intense topics. But it's a great committee. We're looking at the, at sort of the landscape of our, of our learning community, and how do we enhance diversity within our community? And what I, what I mean by that is diversity in every aspect of our learning environment. So whether it's in the classroom, whether it's in extracurricular activities, how do we speak about diversity and its racial diversity, it's, it's socioeconomic diversity, it's religious diversity, it's gender identification. How do we begin that conversation with our students, with our colleagues, and with the larger community to build awareness to it and to talk about some of the implicit biases that may exist and may be embedded within our system that we may not be aware of, that we need to bring to light, address and, and modify and correct moving forward. So it is, like I mentioned a moment ago, it is a great committee. We're looking at how do we utilize our resources to build about equitable conditions for all students, and equitable is not equal, equitable in our perspective is looking at providing students what they need to ensure success and ensure that they have the best opportunities to rise to their greatest potential. The other things that we're looking at is no place for hate designation. That is a designation that is endorsed by the Anti-Defamation League. And it is given to schools that have demonstrated that they understand the DEI, and I'm going to use that acronym, DEI movement, and that they have done activities, concerted activities to address DEI initiatives throughout the entire district that has student representatives, teachers, representatives on the committee, as well as parents, administrators and community members. So we're looking at that. I introduced that to the committee this Thursday. I'm going to continue that conversation on our next meeting, which is, I believe, December second or December third, when we get back from the Thanksgiving break. And a couple of other things that we're doing as well, we looked at strategic plans from other districts, because I wanted the committee to have an idea of how other districts are utilizing their resources and their internal capacity and even external capacities to address the DEI movements and initiatives within the district. We also, we planned the professional development for security personnel, which I think really went well. We looked at implicit biases, implicit biases meaning unconscious things that we may do that are based on our background, based on our life experiences that we bring to the way we respond to certain situations. So we're looking at that as well. And I have to tell you, we all have implicit biases. We just need to be aware of them and sort of suspend actions prior to addressing a situation. And Dr. Misera and I attended a great webinar this week regarding how to build about equity Board of Education policy. So we are looking at that work, and we are going to bring that to the committee as well at our next meeting and hopefully bring about conversation regarding that. The last thing I wanted to mention is that as a committee, it is sort of like a book club as well. We are looking at Stamped, which is Racism, Anti-Racism and You by Jason Reynolds and Ibram Kendi. So every meeting I am asking the committee members to read a section, and we are having a really vibrant conversation around the text and its implications on racism and historical racism. That's what the text really looks at. And the, its implication to society as a, as a whole now and how it is related to education as we approach it as educators, as parents, as students and as community members. So I'm really excited to continue the work. Like I said, we have a very diverse and great committee from different perspectives and different stakeholders. So that's what we're doing with the DEI committee.
Yeah, thanks Ricardo. And yeah, that, that, that book is a great book, and you know, you really get a historical perspective for how, you know, deep-seated and, and far back those biases go. So I think it's a pretty powerful book. And, and the thing that I love about it is just having those kids on there. I think it's just really great to have. We had six kids in that last meeting, and it was, was really, that's, that's wonderful to see.
So I, just a quick question for Ricardo with the technology. How are we looking right now, Ricardo, with, you know, with everyone having computers, you know, from home? Are we in good shape right now? And are you seeing, one of the follow-ups that, are we seeing an uptick of repairs? Maybe Bill Delfi, are we able to keep up on those repairs right now? How are we looking?
We, we are, we, we are good in terms of the parents and students that have reached out to the district that need a device. We have, and I think the community and the board is aware of this. We've had quite a few distribution days. And initially, we did have some concern because we did, at one point, went out of devices. So I, I have to really thank Dr. Misera for reaching out to the company that provided us devices, that donated devices to us. Early into the summer, they donated one hundred ninety-nine devices that we distributed completely. And Dr. Misera called the individual, Mr. Donovan, and sort of explained the situation we're in in terms of not having enough devices for all of the needs of our parents. The individual donated another seventy-five, and that's really what we needed to sort of get us over the hump. I also want to thank the board for allowing us to purchase the four hundred fifty Chromebook devices out of reserves that were still waiting to be delivered. So that's where we are with technology. Tom.
What do we expect those, Ricardo? Do we expect them in soon?
I, I hope, I mean, when we originally ordered them, Tom, they gave us a ninety-minute, I mean, ninety, ninety-day delivery time. And that's what they had to do. So we're hoping, and which would have taken us to the end of January when we originally ordered them. We're hoping that they're going to come in sooner. But as you, as you can imagine, as a community can imagine, it is in the same situation in terms of ordering computers, ordering devices. We were all hit with the same situation in terms of providing our students and our community with a device to access a distance learning platform, education platform. So we're hoping, Tom, that they will come in prior to the estimated date that they gave us, which was the ninety-day, the end of January delivery time. But we don't know. We're hoping that they will come in any day. I'm still looking, and I'm hoping that Bill or someone will call me and say, Ricardo, the Chromebooks came, and we can start processing them and determine how best we should utilize them within the district.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, you know, so just, just to continue on at, at that, we, we also had several other, one, two, three, another six or five or six students that were recently also tweeted out. Sarah Chernus will be, signed her letter, National Letter of Intent for Albright University to play women's lacrosse. So congratulations, Sarah. Haley Hermsdorf will be attending Franklin Pierce University, again, for, for women's lacrosse. It seems that we have quite a few young ladies that, that are finding a, a home in athletics and lacrosse in their college careers. Isabella Romandi will be attending Georgian Court University, and she will be playing lacrosse there as well. Kayla Mitchell will be attending Millersville, and she will also be, be playing lacrosse. Congratulations to all of our female lacrosse athletes that are, are going to be playing in college. I think that's wonderful. Jordan Titus, I don't think I mentioned, it actually is West Virginia that he'll, he'll be wrestling at, and that's just really so exciting for him. He's had such an extraordinary high school career. And, and we know that, you know, shame that the lack of Mac is, doesn't allow him to pick more words because he certainly would have if, if he was permitted to wrestle more so. And we also have Erin Cunningham, who will be attending Fredonia, and congratulations to you, Erin. Just really great to see all these kids doing what they're most passionate about and, and doing so in college as well. The one other thing we have on the agenda, we've got one more. This is turning into a pretty lengthy report. But, you know, one of the things that we talked about, you know, was bringing back the data and talking more about the data. I'm just plugging my computer before it dies here, excuse me. And, 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 you know, about, oh, I won't, a couple of weeks ago, I spoke to John Hildebrand in Newsday. And one of the conversations we had was about the AP reporting. And, and, you know, when John and I spoke, you know, there were only, this year, or last year, I should say, opened up a portal for reporting that, that had not previously been opened. And only a few schools really took advantage and put their AP data in. And we were a school that did not, so John wanted to know why. And I spoke to him, and he got kind of half the story. And half the story was that, you know, we did get our data in for the current year. It was, you know, last year when it was brand new, and we were kind of caught up in some stuff that we did not get that data in, and other schools didn't as well. So I thought, you know, since, since it was reported that we hadn't gotten that in, it might be appropriate for us to go and take a look and, and actually put that data out there because the one thing John said from me was, he captured the quote that Dr. Misera said he's very proud of his AP results and that we will be getting the data in. So I, you know, I, I think it's appropriate for our community to know why I think we're proud of our results. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, basically this idea of creating endless opportunities for kids that when we look back in time and we look at the number of kids that, that are taking tests, the number of kids that are taking, were taking AP tests right, written back ten years ago, eight years ago to today, I think you see a dramatic difference. And what that means is that there, there's a clear indication that kids are seeking more rigorous coursework. And we, so we're writing more tests, but not only that, we have maintained a level of mastery. So if you, if you double the number of tests that, that you write in AP, you, you could because kids achieve at the same level. So I'm going to ask, and if you could, if you could let Raina share her screen. She has a presentation.
Can I just interrupt you for one second? Can Bill unmute George before he gets started?
No, don't. I did, I did text him that, but I, I guess he didn't. You good, George?
Yep.
So, just kidding, George. You know.
I'll mute back up.
I did, I did, I, you know, Raina and I spoke, and Raina put together a nice presentation. I don't want to steal your thunder, Raina, because I started to kind of step on your toes a little bit, but, but I wanted Raina to, to share, you know, why I would tell John Hildebrand that we were proud of, of our AP results. So if you could let Raina have the
She's co-host now.
Co-host, and, and we'll, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about, you know, next month in December, we'll do a little bit of a bigger data presentation for the board. But I think that this is, this is a good, a good little tease right here on AP results.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Misera. There's nothing like a cold November night to have a nice little chat about some data. And can everyone see my screen? Everyone's good?
Oh, no.
No?
We just see you.
All right. Try again. Share screen. Share. Hold on. All right, I think it's going to work now. How about that?
Yep.
Yep.
Let's get rid of that. Okay.
Perfect.
So, you know, the world of data, in, in my world, as one of my roles as a data coordinator, it can be very overwhelming. You know, at this point, every year, they're collecting more and more data, as Dr. Misera said, you know, AP data was not something historically collected. And we collect demographic data from students, assessment data, report card data, attendance data, teacher data, tenure data, you know, teacher evaluation data. That, that list has grown exponentially even over the last five years. And in some cases, the term data, especially when you connect it to assessment, has become like a unfortunate term or a feared term or an ugly term. So I think it's really important, and that whole, that whole sense of data is numbers and overwhelming, and if I'm not a numbers person, it doesn't involve me, is something that we've really kind of forced through in the education world. We've gotten to a point where it's data informed, not data accused, or we're going to, you know, it's, it's going to be, you know, we had, we veered down somewhat of a troubling, difficult path with APR, but I feel like we've come back from that and gotten back to a place where data tells us a lot about our progress. It tells us a lot about our growth. It tells us a story of where we've been. And where people get overwhelmed is where there's too much. So as, as Dr. Misera mentioned, like, this is a little bit about AP, and it's even in the AP world, it's, it's a slice of the AP data that we actually can have our hands on. So it's, it's overview data and it's historical data. And so with historical data, what we really want to do is, is look at trends. So here's the trend for Center of Riches. And as Dr. Misera mentioned, is, is if you look at our trends, and this is, this information actually comes from the College Board Report directly. And in the future, the College Board Report gets, so you know a little bit about the flow of data, gets imported into eSchool, the eSchool data gets imported into both these levels. The eSchool data gets imported into both these Level Zero, and then that follows a chain up to SERES, which is the state level of data. So there's a lot of mechanics in that. And that's why, part of the reason why the state has a window of making things not mandatory when they first collect, say, teacher tenure data, systems weren't set up for that. So there's a trial window to make sure that your management systems can handle the data flow. So here's a snapshot of our advanced placement data. And, and I think if you just take a look at, you know, the years are going across the top. We have total AP students, the number of exams, AP students with scores of three or above, and the percentage of total AP students with three or above. And one of the most important points, it, it's so easy to get like fixated on the numbers. The numbers tell a story. It's so important to remember that behind these numbers, they are kids, there are teachers, there are families, there are hours of professional development, and I could go on and on and on, of staying up late to complete assignments, of cramming for the AP test, organizing the AP test. So, you know, here, our story is really one of growth and progress. And the numbers do speak for themselves, you know. And if you take a moment just to look at it, our growth really boils down to one overarching concept. And I want to emphasize this, I want to try not to gloss over it. It is a direct result of the commitment of our students, our families, the entire school community in not just willing to take challenges, but to face challenges head on and to create opportunities for future success of students. And that really is, you know, the bottom line. And it's, it's, it's a simple statement, but it's certainly not a simple endeavor. And I am certainly proud of where we've come. And I also know that in looking at these numbers and, and knowing, you know, what students need to prepare for in college, that there is, what we can do moving forward is just continue, is continue this growth. Now, and here are kind of the highlights of the previous chart. You know, as I said, it emphasizes our program growth through the outcomes. And, you know, over the years, we gradually increased offerings, more variety of offerings. So students who may have not had an opportunity to take a course in their particular area of interest. And because we really started a more inclusive process, you know, when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusivity, this whole element of upper level coursework, whether it's college concurrent, AP, IB, that inclusivity piece has, in education, has not always been the culture. And it really is a culture. And it's not about Sonoma Riches, it's not even about Long Island or New York. It is a, an educational culture thing, where if we have the right supports in place, everyone is capable of higher level work. And when you start to open the doors and you start taking little gatekeeping elements away, you realize what we've realized here in Sonoma Riches. The first part, and I'm, and I'm not going to make this sound easy. The first part is changing the mindset, engaging in a philosophical conversation, and getting people to a place, and this is students, teachers, administrators, parents, where we know that kids are capable of this higher level work. And first, we're going to raise the expectation, and then we're going to see results. And our results, again, we've raised the expectation. Our numbers in terms of participation have more than doubled. And our student outcomes, although, you know, we could always say this is an area that needs improvement, continues to remain constant or consistent. But our numbers of three and above, you know, are, are increasing with our increasing numbers of participation. And when, even when I hear myself say it, it sounds like it, it just happens. I mean, this is, you know, work of a teacher reworking curriculum to make sure that if there are students who may have not been, you know, able to obtain a three at the beginning of the year, that they're able to obtain a three or higher, you know, towards the end. And some of that's, you know, really looking at all of our classes, all of our students, you know, in these classes as individual learners that may need individual supports to, to achieve proficiency and mastery. So, and we know from our counselors and from our students who are going to college that, you know, engaging in this type of challenging coursework has a tremendous impact on college and career prep. It has an impact on college acceptance, because we hear more and more from colleges and universities, like, they're looking at the transcript and they're looking at the numbers, but they are looking at what kids are taking. And of course, you know, the opportunities that students have to receive college credit, you obtain a three or higher in a series of courses. You can enter freshman year, second semester, or I know of, you know, students that entered as, you know, full sophomore. And that has a major impact on, on students, not just college life, but life and life beyond college. Gives them flexibilities that they wouldn't necessarily have had and could also have, you know, significant financial impact. So, you know, our next steps really are going to, you know, hopefully continue. We're going to continue this trend, but now look at like, you know, the typical two. How do we get that two to the three, the three to the four, the four to the five, and so forth? Similar to what we've done, you know, in, you know, with Regents exams and, and trying to move the needle from passing to mastery. Because we know those mastery numbers, mastery learning is the true indication of college and career readiness. So this is just a, just a visual of the previous chart, just so you can see what it looks like broken up by students' number of exams and number of three and above. You know, obviously this year, we just have, you know, this is what we're, the 2021 school year is what we're anticipating for the May exams. And, you know, I, you know, as an assistant principal, I think one of the most, you know, influential parts of my career when I was an assistant principal and working, you know, more directly with students and scheduling and with the counselors, you know, it's the conversations that the counselors, the teachers are having with kids and parents, and really trying to be supportive and encouraging to some, to give the kids the confidence that they can take on these challenges and be successful. And I think that we do that really, really well in Sonoma Riches. You know, I think that we have the opportunity to give individualized attention. And we've seen it time and time again, that our teachers are the ones who know what's out there, know what they have for kids. And they are willing to go the extra mile to get, to, you know, to basically provide the best opportunities for students to success. And, you know, it does start, you know, a lot of our teachers do start with looking at, you know, looking at data, looking at where we've been, looking at where we can go. So I'd be remiss in my, you know, my ELA background to not conclude with a, with a quote, because in, in my experience, the numbers in our lives, the numbers in our school system really do help push us forward, and they really do generate ideas. And I'll end with, you know, we do have a, a little data subcommittee as part of our curriculum committee. And, you know, moving forward, I think the more people we have in these conversations to look at data, to see graduation data, Regents data, other data trends in our world, you know, you know, different sets of eyes see different things, and that's where ideas are born. That's where great ideas come from. So I'd like to thank you for the time. And if you want to join one of our data conversations, please feel free to reach out to me.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, thank you for the presentation. I think one of the, I mean, it, it does show a, a big picture of where we, where we were and where we're going. But I think one of the things that would be really nice to highlight would be maybe recognizing some of the kids that do do the mastery, like, some districts do recognize their AP scores. I know we do that for our sports, but maybe that might be something that we should consider in our district if we're supposed, if we're trying to get to that next level as well. I know it's not just about the scores, but I think that that might be something, you know, something to consider incorporating into our programming as well for, to increase awareness and, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think that, you know, things like that, those recognitions, other kids will see that. And that has an impact, you know, on the greater school community. It's a motivating factor. You know, they see, you know, that if students being recognized, you know, for their achievements, that could potentially motivate others. You know, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Raina, I just want to thank everybody looking at these numbers. When I was in high school in Sonoma Riches, and that's a little couple of years ago, but there were literally five kids in my AP Bio class. And we didn't have these options to, to see the administration and the staff kind of balancing, raising the expectations of our students, but also giving them the confidence to try. You know, it's not that the kids now are smarter or we weren't as smart as them. It's that, it's, it's expected that our kids are going to try, all kids, but that our teachers and our staff are giving them the confidence to, to try, you know. And, and it really just, for me, it's so exciting to see all the different options that the kids have. It's not just math and science. You know, those are great, or one English that the school has just so many options for kids. And, you know, you might not be, you might want to take AP Calc, and, you know, some of us struggle through it. But there are other options that you can, you know, try and, and push yourself. So I really, for me, it's a huge thank you to everybody who's been working so hard for so many years to grow our programs. It's really truly incredible where we are, coming from where we've been. It really is just very exciting for me to see that.
You know, and I think it, you know, like I had mentioned, the little conversations, thank you, Robin, you know, that, you know, that I've had along the way, like, you know, you really just have to, like, listen to kids and people and watch kids. Like, and sometimes it's an observation in the library, or I'm in a classroom and I'm watching a kid interact. And like, you, you know, as an educator, you just have the sense like, wow, that kid could really flourish in, in this environment as well. And so it comes, and it's, again, it's small pieces all put together. It's a teacher, it's a counselor, it's an administrator, a librarian, a parent, you know, or, you know, even kids recognizing each other. You know, I, I started to realize, like, I, I saw a presentation years ago at a, like, maybe my first presentation at a National Honor Society, maybe it was science. And I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, that these kids had to go outside of school for some opportunities and that we have capacity to do some of those opportunities in school. So I think the history piece is going to keep us grounded for the years to come. So it's so important to know your roots, to know the history. And the history is going to show pitfalls too. We're going to learn from that, you know. Our, our kids learn, that's how our kids learn, our kids learn from that. So I'm super proud, and I know we've got much more to accomplish. And that's why we're going to keep having these conversations. And it's, it's not going to just be about AP, it's going to be about Regents exams and, you know, other, other data points that are not necessarily just numbers, you know.
So this is. Can we put that on our website, maybe? Like, what the link, will we be able to put that on the website with the links for the curriculum committee? Maybe even broken down. I know you had done it for me, as far as like.
Oh, like the different subcommittees?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're very specialized. And I think that if everyone on the committee say took a, took a subcommittee and then reported back, that would be phenomenal.
Yeah, so that would be good. Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Click to stop share there, Raina. And the one thing, yeah, and the one thing that I, you know, I mean, I, I love that, the last slide, because the last slide with the, you know, well, I love your quote, the last slide. But the one before that with the bar graphs, Raina knows, I, you know, I love, I love to see the trend lines, you know, and the trend lines.
I didn't put the trend lines in.
And I was saying for trend lines, you know, I mean, down on trend lines. And the trend lines show, they show, they show more students taking, you know, taking AP classes over 10 years, and all three trend lines are up. More tests being written and more kids scoring at level three or higher. So, you know, when you see all three of those things moving in the right direction, everything's moving in the right direction. So, you know, what Robin said, and to what Raina said, and to what Danielle said, you know, good stuff. And, and it really is, to me, very exciting. You know, the last thing, and again, going on and on here. You know, we also have a legislative committee that will be, that, you know, it was, you know, lightly attended, let's say, Robin, Danielle, thanks for coming. You know, but, but we are, you know, we are, you know, trying to be, you know, active with that. You know, we do have, you know, I did send letters to, you know, although actually some of the races were, were not even called yet locally. But it does look like there is a bit of a transition in the leadership for the Long Island delegation to the Assembly and Senate in New York State. And, and that's, you know, so it shifted a little bit. And, and it has skewed the balance a little bit, which quite honestly weakens our position in Albany for advocacy, is what I would say. So, you know, it will be an odd year, you know, depending upon how things ultimately shake out with, when the races are all declared. We will be reaching out, we will be making sure that we, you know, continue to nurture those, you know, relationships and, and work with our state legislators to, you know, advocate for our, for our fair share. Obviously, one of the biggest things we're advocating for is if, in fact, there is any loss of state aid, that there is a federal backfill of that. We do know that the state is in a better position. They were, you know, talking about, you know, $16 billion shortfall that is now about $8 billion. So still losing money, but hopefully, you know, that, that the projected losses have moved in the right direction and would result in, you know, if anything, less of a cut and hopefully no cut. There is, you know, an enormous rainy day fund in the state that could cover this. So there's some advocacy in, in the legislature to, for the governor, to, you know, put some pressure on the governor to use that as well. But a lot of this is to be determined, and we will see. I do have a meeting with the, I'm on the Commissioner's Advisory Council for the state, and I have been selected to ask the first question to the Commissioner Friday morning. And that will be a question about what, what mandate relief New York State Education Department is proposing to the, to the legislature. So, you know, I'll be able to report back on, on how the Commissioner responds to that. As you know, the, the new Commissioner is our former Chancellor, Betty Rosa. And so I'll be able to, they actually suspended the Commissioner's Advisory Council. Last March was the last time we met, and this is the first time we're actually meeting with the Commissioner as a council. So it'll be interesting to, to get her perspective on what's happened throughout the state on Friday. I think that's it for the brief superintendent's report tonight, George.
Listen, there was a lot of good stuff there, nothing that we wanted to skip. So thank you, everybody.
You got it.
For presenting, we do appreciate it. That does bring us to questions and comments regarding tonight's agenda only. So if anybody has a question regarding just the agenda, of course, there'll be a time at the end for any public comments. But now is the time to ask questions or make comments regarding tonight's agenda. To use that hand raising function in the participants, I think you got a click there. Give it a minute, Bill.
Good thing.
We good, you think, Bill?
No hands raised, so.
Okay.
I must have lulled them to sleep.
Yeah. The Board of Ed is asked to accept the minutes of the following meetings as prepared by the District Clerk. Minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Ed on October 28th, 2020, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Carries unanimously. I think that's the shortest list of minutes that we've had in quite some time. Financial reports be resolved at the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools accepts the following financial reports. Budget transfer general exhibit 2A and exhibit 2A1. General claims audit report from October 2020 exhibit 2B. Treasury reports October 2020 exhibit 2C, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda vote, a motion to approve consent agenda asterisk. Agenda items are consent agenda items, consent agenda items are approved by a single vote. Unless they are removed from being consent item prior to the vote, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. That brings us down to.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome, Janine. That brings us, holy macro. Page 11. Oh, that brings us to the, I guess, the general public session where members of the public could desire to address a question of the board on any topic related to board work. Welcome to do so. Speakers are requested to limit or appoint a spokesperson. So if anybody has any questions about anything, now is the time.
George, can we just thank Jeremy Thode for his donation?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you, Robin. I don't know where he gets all this stuff. Our great benefits, beneficiaries, I guess of it. So thank you very much for that, Jeremy. Thank you, Robin.
All right, we do have a hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Okay, it's Lisa Marin.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your hard work. I know some, you know, hopefully not too tough days ahead. I just was, I noticed on the agenda that Dr. Flynn Trace is no longer going to be the IB coordinator. So I was wondering who is going to be the new coordinator, if you knew?
Yeah, Rena, you want to jump in or we're, you know, we're basically, you know, that was something that just came about. And we are, you know, we are basically right now picking that up as an administrative team. But we, you know, it kind of, we just didn't have time to get on to this, this agenda, but we are. So we really can't speak to the personnel piece of it, but we are actively, you know, identifying a, a way so that we don't, we will not skip a beat for the kids. And right now, Ms. Mangonia, Mr. Thode, and other members that are very active in administration of IB are, you know, kind of picking up that piece right now. That answers it adequately, Rena, what do you think?
Yeah, you know, we're progress, but solution is coming shortly.
Yeah. We just want to reassure everybody that nothing will drop there. We have 17 kids right now that are IB DP candidates. And certainly we're going to, you know, and upset the program as well, but 17 kids. We certainly do not want to see them to be.
Yeah, and, and anytime you have a head of schools slash principal transition, which we have as well, or an IB coordinator transition. IB also steps in and helps and, and kind of gives you a lot of extra attention to make sure that you have the support that you need as you transition in these important roles. So we're in contact, they're joining us for weekly meetings at this point. So the head of IB schools North America is actually meeting with our team on a regular basis. And we'll continue to meet with our team, you know, both administrative and teachers as, as much as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yes, sorry, we have another one, Christine Buff. Okay.
Sorry, guys, I couldn't unmute myself, I apologize.
That's okay.
I was like, where is that unmute button? Um, question two, actually. What's the status of some of the high school clubs, specifically the robotics club? As well as potential, the jazz, the jazz band clubs that they used to have? I mean, what's the status of those two items?
So in, in the budget process, we're a couple of, and off the top of my, I can't remember exactly which clubs we have running and which clubs we don't. In the budget process, there was some reduction to clubs due to some of the cuts that we had to make. However, you know, so we had to make some decisions about which clubs could run virtually. You know, to keep kids engaged and which clubs could not. And in particular, I don't know where we're at with either one of those. Carrie, do you know offhand? I know we have a list of the charters, but I'm not sure exactly where we're at. Are either of those running?
No, we're not, robotics is not running and neither is jazz band. We did implement instrumental music as well as the chorus, because those are tied to the NISM performances and SCMEA performances. But due to the budget cuts, like you said, and being able to run certain things virtually. We haven't had to make decisions on which clubs we can run that to stay within the approved budget. And unfortunately, at this time, those two, jazz band and robotics, will not be running.
Okay, I, I do understand. I just, I'm so incredibly sad about the robotics piece of this. Because as Mr. Nofe will attest, you know, a bunch of kids who started off super strong in elementary school, kind of got little neglected in middle school and it sort of fizzled. And, you know, the ninth grade moment is now here for my one son and a bunch of other kids. And, and all, and never mind them, I mean, the seniors who, who didn't get to go at the end of last year and compete. You know, it's to my understanding that first is actually doing some sort of virtual, potentially doing a virtual competition. And I don't know, it just, it completely breaks my heart that, that those kids are not going to have the opportunity to compete. And I, I don't know, I mean, there's, I just feel like there's got to be a way to, you know, fundraise the money to get their fees in or whatever, I don't even know, but I just.
So Christine, yeah, we are looking at it because there are some programs. You'll see like the musical, we're trying to see how we can get the musical running in the spring as an outdoor type of a program. They can rehearse safely and everything like that. And robotics has come up in a similar question is how can we do it? They do have those robots they built last year and weren't able to compete with. So we're looking at the athletic, the curriculum, co-curricular budgets as a whole, as a district wide K-12. There are less clubs running in the elementary building than were anticipated due to the virtual reasonings. So, you know, Mr. Ritchie was gracious enough to transfer some of his funds over to the high school to allow for the musical to occur. So we're continuing to monitor those things and see what's going on as school progresses to see if we can be able to implement anything further going forward. And rightfully knowing that those kids from robotics last year were not able to go to competition and do have the robots ready to go. And it might not be as much as far as a stipend for a supervisor. Or maybe the fees might be a little less because they did waive them and refund some of them for them to carry into the new year. So we're continuing to look at it and what, like I said, we're looking at it as a K-12, not just a high school co-curricular, but it's K-12 co-curricular. And all the principals are working together to see how we can get the best offerings out for all kids.
Okay, thank you very much. That, that gives me a glimmer of hope. I appreciate that. I mean, honestly, it's really, I just, I remember being in that board meeting when I believe Dr. Mestera had to let the kids know that they couldn't go. And I get it, you know, we're in a pandemic, I understand that. But, you know, some of these, you know, these, some of these children could just even be gathering virtually and coming up with concepts and ideas and just, you know, doing things that are smart and safe. And just, I don't know, just good versus, you know, hanging out on YouTube or just doing, you know, other things that, you know, giving them a goal. When they have no goals right now, except just schoolwork, I think it's, it's a little difficult. But I appreciate all you're saying, so I hope that something can get worked out in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, yeah, Christine, you know, I, I share that heartbreak with you. I saw those kids last year, I watched them working on that robot and, and the passion that went into it. And, and they were just, you know, I, I, we're with you, you know, we're, we, you know, what, what's happening now is, is, you know, we're coming up with creative ways to do things we weren't sure we'd be able to in September. And so that's one of those things that, like, you know, Ms. Lachlan said, we, we, we will look at creative ways to try to bring back some things that, that right now aren't.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope.
No more hands. Not that I can say.
Okay, I'll go through the list of announcements, Bill, just let me know if a hand pops up, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So the next Board of Ed meeting is Wednesday, December 16th, 2020, location to be determined. We had our last one, but we needed to shift to fully remote, so we'll certainly let you know that. Executive session will be at six o'clock and then the action meeting approximately seven. And we do try to get out here as quickly as possible at seven o'clock for the public. We don't like to keep you waiting, so. Thank you very much for everybody who came, Bill, do you, do you see anything else?
No hands, we're clear.
All right, thank you, Bill, and thank you to the community who logged on tonight. And us, we, we appreciate it and we do appreciate all the questions and all the comments. And, you know, as Dr. Mestera said, we, we do feel the same heartbreak that you do for the students. So always reexamining and working to give them as many of the opportunities back as we can. So thank you very much for coming tonight. Motion to move into executive session for, to discuss other matters, the disclosure of which would result in an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Good second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously and Ron will just use the same as before.
Correct.
Okay.
Good night, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, thanks, Janine, thanks, Bill.
George, good night, everybody.
Night.